Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 28th. If you are watching live on Monday, October 28th, we encourage you to call in. If you have comments or questions, our call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on both Verizon and Optimum Cable TV. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting and past meetings at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is, I should have pulled up the calendar in...
The fourteenth of November.
Is Monday, the fourteenth of...
Thursday. It's a Thursday.
Ah, yes. Right, that's the week because of Veterans Day.
Correct.
So our next regular meeting is on an unusual schedule, Thursday, the fourteenth of November at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. Bunch of announcements to make, but I will forego those for the moment so as not to delay the appearance of a good friend of Pleasantville, the Commissioner of Planning in Westchester County, Norma Drummond. Welcome, Norma.
Thank you very much. It's nice to be here again.
Her subject tonight is the census.
So welcome to Census 2020, and as we get ready for it, I want to take the village through a couple of the issues that we're seeing so that we can better prepare everybody for the fact that Census 2020 is coming. So since 1790, the census has been mandated by the federal government. It's actually a requirement within the Constitution that everybody be counted in the United States every 10 years. It is critically important, not just for how many members of Congress we have, that's one of the factors that it gets used for, but it really affects the redistricting at every level of government, right from our county legislators. Right now, our legislators represent approximately 50,000 people per legislator, and so it's important that if there's more people, that there are representative district sizes all across the county. But more importantly, the census is responsible for how approximately $880 billion a year gets spent. We found a George Washington Institute for Policy report from December 2018 that spoke to $880 billion of 2016 federal funds and its use, all divvied up based on census data. CDBG is one of the ones that the Village of Pleasantville certainly is familiar with, but there's a whole host of housing, education, healthcare, emergency services, roadwork, all of, there's all sorts of programs that are affected and decided based on census. It also is used for good policy and decision-making. Do we need to close a school in a couple of years because our numbers, the number of children is dropping? Do we need to open a school somewhere? Do we need to expand a school? Do we need to think about where additional public infrastructure should go because of growth or because of decline in growth in certain areas? And then there are certain other data sets and other surveys that the Census Bureau does use over the course of the 10 years where the census is informed by it. So many people think of the census in the picture as the census taker comes to your house and sits down, frankly, this could have been my family. I grew up in Mount Pleasant, by the way, right around the corner, and I had eight brothers and sisters, so between the 11 of us living in our house, we were more people than the 10 people on the form could handle. All right? So I do honestly remember, even though this picture is from 1940, I do in fact remember the census taker coming to our house because my little brother didn't fit on the form. So, but this is, 2020 is going to be the first time that 95% of Americans are going to not get a form in the mail, but you are going to get an invitation to respond to the census online. You are not going to get a form in the mail. This is so unique to this census, okay? And we have to really start preparing people across this county for the fact that they are not going to get a form in the mail. Also this time around, the Census Bureau is going to have greater access to other government records, social security records, HUD records, post office records, they've already started using. However, let me be clear that the vision and the sharing of information does not work both ways. Census Bureau, the Census Bureau employees are all taking oath of confidentiality. They are not allowed to share government, the records that they collect from people and individual households with any other federal department or any other government. But they will, this time around, census takers, if you have not responded to the census invitation, census takers will have the ability to talk to building managers, and they will have the ability to talk to your neighbors and to others to speak, to ask the question, how many people live in that housing unit? Okay? So that is new this time around. The Census Bureau, Census 2020 actually started its work in 2011. There's a lot of work that gets put into getting ready for a census, including, think of all the technology that had to get developed to be able to allow people to respond online to the census. And by the way, when I say you'll be responding online, I don't just mean by computer. You will have the ability to respond on your smartphone. Okay? So the, and you will, for those who are not so computer savvy, you will have the ability to call somebody. But I'll go through more specifically what it is and what happens with the data. And so this, the census is important because it is the only census that the Census Bureau works on where 100% of the population must get counted. It is in fact the only really truly accurate census that happens. Every month, the American Community Census Survey sends out about 300,000 surveys to households across the country. It's not mandatory, but they try to collect information based on these monthly census about ongoing information, and that's the data that gets released in five-year increments. But the Census Bureau itself, and by the way, that ACS asks a lot more questions, the Census, 2020 Census will be asking people nine questions. What's your name? Where do you live? You know, whether you rent or own your home, your race, your age, your sex, your relationship to the other people. When the number one person who is identified, is identified as the head of household, the other people on the form will then respond to a question about what is your relationship to the number one, to the head of household? So if you're unrelated, or if you're a son, daughter, spouse, whatever it is, you'll have the ability to, you will be asked that question. The citizenship question, you'll notice on my slide, has been blocked. A court has finally decided that this citizenship question will not be allowed to be asked, even though the ACS, the American Community Certainty, does in fact ask that question every month. But the Census Bureau, by the way, is responsible for the census of prisons, it does a lot of economic censuses. So the Census Bureau is an agency that's around every day of the, of the year, every year of the decade, not just working on the decennial censuses. I just want to take you through a quick lesson in census geography, because I think this will help people understand a little bit better about the level of confidentiality. If you look in the middle of the slide that I've put up, I've given you a block. If I were to walk out of Village Hall, and I made a right, go to the corner, made a right, go to the next corner, and I'm by the parking lot for the train station there, making another right, and I go into the end of that block, make another right, eventually I'm going to come back to the entrance of Village Hall here. That's a city block. That is a block. So the person who lives across the street, maybe if there's housing above the store, I'm not sure, but if the person who lives across the street is in another block, in fact, that person might be in another block group and another census tract. So the ability for people to worry about whether their household is going to be distinguishable, it's really not. You really, the Census Bureau never releases any data at the block level, because in fact, in industrial areas or commercial areas, you might have very, very few people living there. The Census Bureau never releases data at that level. The lowest level of geography that the Census Bureau does release data on is the block group. And you see how that same block, 3001, is at the top of that block group. So again, the person who lives across the street on Glen Ridge Road would in fact be in another block group. And this is just a geography for makeup. It's not any specific area of Westchester. But a block group has an ideal size or an optimum size of about 1,500 people. A block group will have anywhere between 600 and 3,000 people. Totally, it's totally impossible to identify any, any single household within a block group. If you think of our CDBG data, that's done by block group at the block group level. All right? Block groups, though, are then aggregated up into census tracts. Many of us know census tracts are a regular form of geography, but they are made up of multiple block groups. They have an optimum size of about 4,000 people, but in reality, they could have anywhere between 1,200 and 8,000 people. So the census tracts in Westchester actually started at the lowest part of the county, and then the numbers work their way up. So you can see the Mount Vernon area and the Sound Shore area has some of the lower geography, and then Yonkers, and then the census tracts will work their way up. There's hundreds of census tracts in Westchester County. This is my first reason why I am here and why I'm going to tell you, I, as Commissioner of Planning, am concerned about our census count and us getting an accurate count. In the summer of 2018, the County Planning Department, who is a census affiliate, by the way, so we have access and we do assist the Census Bureau in preparing for the decennial censuses, we reviewed 370,000 addresses, housing unit addresses here in Westchester County. Officially, there are only 345,885 units, housing units in Westchester County. Do you notice the disconnect? We found 24,000 housing units more than the official Census Bureau count of housing units in Westchester. Even, they may not all be occupied, but even if just one person is living in each one of those units, that's the difference between Westchester County being over a million people or under a million people. Again, my first concern for us getting an accurate census count. One of the things this made us do was to go back and take a look at the Census Bureau's reporting by our local municipalities to see if we are in fact reporting building permits correctly. And we did in fact find that there are seven municipalities in Westchester that have not been reporting building permits correctly for quite a while in some cases. And we do know, everybody knows, there's always turnover in building departments, the clerks, the building inspectors themselves. So the Census Bureau will try for five months in a row, if they don't get a response, they just give up on trying to get, collect data from your municipality, and they then impute a number. You guys were fine, by the way. Your building inspector, your building department does a great job, so no problem. However, we did find two large cities, one large town very close by, and then three villages that in fact, and one smaller city, by the way, that did not, or have not been responding to this monthly Census Bureau. And in fact, so that made us turn around and say, whoa, we need to do some training. So we're actually hosting some trainings right now for the local municipalities on the importance of the building survey, building permit surveys, how to do them, how they get used. And actually, the last one is in the town of Mount Pleasant tomorrow morning. So if you're, you know, if you're, if anybody from the town or from the village wishes to go, you're certainly still welcome. There's, you don't have to get registered ahead of time. But it's really important for us to help the municipalities understand why the Census Bureau survey is important. Hopefully, 10 years from now, I'll be long gone, but hopefully 10 years from now, we won't have this same disconnect in terms of the number of housing units that we found versus the official number in the county. One of the other things that we had to do, this was last fall, was boundary and annexation survey. This is in fact, on the left is the city of New Rochelle, in the middle is the town of Mamaroneck, and on the right is the Village of Larchmont. The blue is the boundary lines for these municipalities that the Census Bureau had. The white is in reality the real census, the real boundary line. And so we actually had to go through all the boundary lines that the Census Bureau had and identify anomalies like this or areas that were wrong to make sure that everybody who belongs and lives in the city of New Rochelle is in fact counted as living in the New Rochelle, rather than them taking credit for some of the people who live in the town of Mamaroneck, and then a lot more people get lost from the Village of Larchmont's count because they're now being, right now, counted in the town of Mamaroneck. So again, this is all stuff that we do behind the scenes. There are two other factors of work that the County Planning Department does. One is we review census tracts themselves. Remember I told you there's an optimum size of a census tract? As census tracts start to get large, the Census Bureau has come to us and asked, can we start, can we think about splitting some census tracts? Point in fact, there are two census tracts in the city of Peekskill that the Census Bureau felt was getting too large. We went to the city of Peekskill, discussed it with them to, you know, see what they, what they thought. They actually asked that we leave them as they are because they'd like to compare apples to apples, so this way the census tracts will stay the same as what the 2010 census. But again, if they get over that maximum of 10,000, of the 8,000 people, they know in fact for the 2030 census, those census tracts will have to be split. The other thing that we do, and your neighbor, the town of Newcastle, was, took advantage of this, was we identified, we worked with the Census Bureau to identify what we call census-designated places. Newcastle had specifically asked us if we could have Millwood and Chapakla identified as census-designated places so that they can actually aggregate up and get the census and demographic data for specific to the people who live in those two census-designated places so that they can work better and better understand what those two communities are all about. So a lot of work gets done behind the scenes that people never, people never know about, but in this case, we're sharing some of that with you because again, some of the concerns that we've seen along the way. So I did say the census started working in 2011, but right now, they're in what they're calling an educational phase. They're trying, the Census Bureau themselves and us as a local census affiliate, we are all trying to get out to the local municipalities and to any kinds of groups that will listen to help you understand and remind you that the census is in fact coming and what the changes are this time around. The census itself will start counting people in January. They have to get to the remotest parts of Alaska and Maine, frankly, one person at a time to find some of these individual villages and some of the individual households up in those really remote areas. But they will start in January counting people. In February, they will start counting what we call group quarters. Group quarters are assisted living facilities, they are prisons, they are the areas and the buildings where we have larger populations that don't necessarily go anywhere else. This is where they stay. College dorms, in fact, are one. Group, you know, there's a couple homes of sort that are considered group quarters. So the census will actually start counting those group quarters in February. By the way, I have schools was an important factor for us. I have, I have four children. None of my four children get to get counted as part of my household. My son and his wife are their own household, they're fine. My two older daughters, my twins, are 26, but they're both in grad school. So I have three students, three children who are students. The two who are grad school, one's in Salt Lake City and one's in Boston, they live in private housing units. They're not part, they're, even though they are students, they live in private housing units. They get counted, they have to count themselves, fill out their own census because they are in fact living in private housing units. My youngest daughter, who's 19 and is in school in Washington DC, lives in a dorm. That's a group quarter. So in fact, she will not respond to the census herself, but her school will handle the dorm. The important distinction is students who are at a community college, like Westchester Community College in Valhalla, they, because they don't live there at night, when they go home, they have to report based on where they'll be laying their head on April 1st. All right? Officially, Census Day is April 1st, so you will report on where you live on that day. But the, so the Census Bureau next month should be telling us what their advertising will be, but there are, you know, we've certainly looked at for the county, what level of advertising we need to do and how we need to help inform people about what's going on. So about 95% of the households in this country will get an invitation. You'll get a letter with a code on it that distinguishes your specific housing unit, and that, you'll take that code and you'll go online and respond to the census to those nine questions that you saw. Then, you know, the rest of them, census takers will get out to the other households. There are some limited areas that will in fact right away get a census form sent to them just because of the remoteness of the area and some other things. The ability for people to respond online, though, will actually give us the ability to get a better sense of the responses much quicker, because think of all the fewer reforms, the forms that now the Census Bureau staff don't have to input. All of these forms, people will be inputting directly. So it will inform us as a census affiliate again as to the response rates. So we'll be able to get a heads up in April and in May about those areas that have not seen a good census response. The Rockefeller Institute actually did a survey, or did a, did a survey in April and May about the 500 census tracts in New York State that they feel will be the most undercounted in the 2020 census. Unfortunately, Westchester County had the number one census tract. It's in the city of Yonkers, but the city, our city of Yonkers had 11 census tracts. Now again, we have hundreds of census tracts in Westchester County. They identified the top 500 in the state, and we had a whole host of them here in Westchester. So again, concern on our part as to the expected response that we're going to get. I've said April 1st is Census Day. By April 1st, you will have gotten three mailings from the Census Bureau. The first mailing is going to go out, it's a letter with your code, your invitation to respond, that's going to go out on or about March 12th. If you don't respond to that, another letter is going to go out on March 16th. If you don't respond to that, a postcard will go out on March 26th. And then finally, April 8th, if you have not responded to those first three pieces of mail, you'll get another letter and you will, for the first time, get the questionnaire mailed to you. The Census Bureau is trying to obviously, you know, limit its costs, and so they're trying to not do as much mailing this time around as they had to. Lastly, on April 20th, for the, you know, the last three postcard will go out, that pretty much says it's not too late. In reality, people will have until the end of July to in fact respond to the census, but generally, anybody who has not responded by the middle of April is likely to be visited by a census taker. So again, if you don't want somebody knocking on your door, the idea would be to respond to the postcard, to the letter. If they don't, somebody will come knocking on your door. If you don't answer, they will come back knocking on your door. So imagine the amount of education we're going to have to do in February and March to all of our senior citizens who no longer, they're afraid to answer their doors because they're afraid of all the scams. So we're going to have to do a lot of education, getting to all the senior centers around the county to be able to educate seniors about what to look for, the fact that Census Bureau employees carry IDs, and they will never ask for your social security number, and they're never going to ask for a bank account or a credit card number. But again, the important thing for everybody to understand is that March 12th, the first mailings are going out the door. How many people get their mail and just, I don't know who this is, I'm just going to throw it out, and you don't even bother opening, especially postcards, you know? So the important thing is to be able to help the public understand that these mailings are coming. In, to get ready for the census, every 10 years, the census also does what they call a CBAM survey, or a Census Barriers Attitudes and Motivators survey, where they send out 50,000 letters to get a sense of what's your likelihood to respond to the census. They did it in 2008, they've done it now for 2000, in 2018 for the census. Of the 50,000 email, of the 50,000 letters that they sent out, they only got a response of 17,500. Now, they did the same thing in 2008. In 2008, the first question that was asked, how likely are you to respond to the census? In 2008, 14% of the responders said they were not likely to respond to the census. 14%. In reality, 24% of the residents did not respond to the census forms that got mailed to them. In 2018, the same question got answered. 33% of the responders said that they were not likely to respond to the census. 33%. If we add another 10% onto that, that means four out of every Americans, four out of every 10 Americans is not going to respond to the census. How devastating would that be to the county, to the village in terms of funding and the reimbursement and your count of reality? So again, this is number two reason why I'm concerned about the census. In fairness, in 2018, the citizenship question was not resolved. So the likelihood, our hope, is that this percentage would be lower now because people would have some level of comfort that the citizenship question is not being asked. However, it's very likely that the damage has been done. Okay? People were then asked, how familiar are you with the census? 21% of those who responded said that they were not familiar with the census. Think about it. I told you I have a 19-year-old. She was nine years old 10 years ago. She didn't have to worry about filling out a census 10 years ago. Even my 26-year-olds, my twins were 16 at the time, they didn't have to worry about a census. So there's a whole group of young people that we have to educate about the fact that they have a responsibility to respond to the census. All right? Even our senior citizens, there is a whole group of people that we now have to not just help them to respond because the technology is changing, but also to help them, you know, understand they have an obligation by the Constitution. Think of all the new Americans in the last 10 years. They don't necessarily know that the census gets done, so there's a whole lot of education that needs to continue. People were asked, if you're not going to respond to the census, why not? These should be no surprise. Apathy, they don't care, concerns about confidentiality and privacy, fear of repercussion, what's going to happen to me, distrust in the government, and ultimately, what's in it for me. At the same time, people were asked, what would motivate you to respond to the census? 94% of the people who responded said if they knew that it meant more help, more funding for hospitals and healthcare, more funding for fire departments, that that would in fact motivate them to respond. 92%, if it meant more funding for roadways and for the police departments, for, you know, things of that sort, they would respond. 85% said if it meant more funding for schools, they would respond. So this informs us that when we do our advertising, we need to make sure we've got kids with a backpack on it, or eating their lunch, or ambulances, or road crews at work, so that we can tie it to, to help people understand that responding to the census in fact leads to funding for all the different resources that are important to us within our communities. So what we did, we took a look at, from the 2010 census, we took a look at those areas that had less than the average response rate, which was 73%, and then also those that had the varying degrees of response, less than the 73%. Ultimately, those, those census tracts in Westchester that had less than a 50% response rate are in red. So you guys did well. You did really well compared to some of the other communities. But again, like, you go to Yorktown, and you're like, what the heck is that one little block and the census tract? We actually went, got a sense of what's up there, and it's, it's the other side of Route 6 from the Jefferson Valley Mall. There's like a, I want to say a converted summer bungalow community up there? So there's, you know, there is definitely a neighborhood up there that had a really poor response rate. North White Plains in North Castle has had a very poor response rate. But look at the city of Mount Vernon. The city of Mount Vernon is so bright with colors down there. Certainly Yonkers, one would expect that. Portchester, more than 50% of the Village of Elmsford has, has color to it. So there, there's a great concern on our part about getting accurate responses, not just in, you know, the, these hard-to-count areas, or these areas that we expect to be hard to count this time around, but certainly everywhere in the county because of the changes. So on April 1st of this year, County Executive Latimer did establish a complete count committee. The complete count committee has now met every month since then. We actually participated in the New York State Public Hearing that was held in July, stressing the importance of getting an accurate count and making sure that some portion of the New York, of New York State's funding comes to the county. They, they've now broken up into five subcommittees, or they've established these five subcommittees, and I was chastised in the village, sorry, in the town of Yorktown because I put seniors last, so I'm going to say senior citizens first. Senior citizens and persons with disabilities are certainly a population that we are extremely concerned about. But I've now met with, earlier, well, last week, I met with the Visiting Nurse Association to, because how better than to get in to see some of our senior citizens and persons who are disabled, except through the home health aides that go to their homes? So we're going to be looking through a whole different network of resources to be able to get to everybody. Certainly the nonprofits, our faith-based, our community-based organizations, we recognize that everybody has a relationship with somebody, whether it's their doctor, it's their clergy person, it's some nonprofit that they get food from or get, you know, some other resources from. So we're going to really be working with a whole host of organizations to make sure that all, each and every one of these organizations is helping people understand the census is coming and it's how important it is that they respond. Youth and education, we've now, the Census Bureau has met with the School Boards Association. I've had conversations with the PTA organization, because we're hoping that our school districts will actually adopt Census Week in sometime in March. Because think about how you all learned to recycle. My daughter came home from school one day and say, Mom, don't throw out that water bottle, the ocean is full of water bottles. So we will learn to recycle because our children came home and said it was something good to do. If we can get our children to teach parents, particularly those parents who may not even speak English, about the importance of the census, our likelihood is we might be able to get a better response. And so the Census Bureau itself, on their website, has actually developed curriculum at all different grade levels to incorporate it into math classes and history classes and different things to be able to use it. They created a song for all things, but I'm not going to play it for you, it'll get in your head. And so there's all sorts of resources out there. We've even seen, there's a whole bunch of flyers out there. We're hoping to work with the Builders Realty Institute to be able to get flyers into multifamily buildings. Many of the areas that you saw that were the hardest to count are areas of apartment buildings, multifamily properties. And so it's going to be really important to get the landlords and the management companies to put flyers up by the mailboxes in those buildings, again, to encourage people to respond to the census. So that's it. That's my, that's my pitch to you about the importance of the census. Questions?
Thank you, Norma. That was great, and we'll keep beating the Drummond. So those letters that arrive will be from the US Census Bureau, that'll be marked prominently on the outside, hard to miss in your mail.
One would think so. The logo that's in the bottom right-hand corner of the county's logo is the officially United States Census logo. So one would think the envelopes would have that logo on it.
Okay.
I don't know. We just know, we have a sample of the form itself, but we haven't seen what their envelopes or their marketing looks like yet.
So will you guys have any kind of real-time sense of the degree of the response throughout the Westchester County?
That's our expectation.
Uh huh.
The Census Bureau has said that we would be able to see on a census tract by census tract basis what the response tract basis what the response rates are like.
All right, well, based on our performance last time, it looks like we'll be okay, but pledge our help in any-
But you never know.
Pledge our help in any way if the, if the census returns suggest that you need it.
Question?
Yes, is there concern about any systematic or state-sponsored attempts to hack the online portion of this?
So, this, we were told just last week that the Census Bureau is buying up all the URLs for websites that are at all similar to 2020census.gov, because they are so concerned about scams and people who are going to prey upon, you know, our weakest Americans here to be able to make sure that they can do what they can to protect them. Ultimately, you know, they couldn't even share what some of their security measures are, just because they obviously don't want the world to know what they're doing. But yes, they're, they're going to be doing a lot, they're putting a lot of security measurements in place. One of the things I will tell you is, one of the things we're trying to identify is public areas for computers, like libraries, or schools, or nonprofits that may have computer rooms, to be able to create census hubs, so that if somebody doesn't want to respond to the census from their own computer, or they don't have a computer, or they don't have Intranet service, that they'd be able to go to a public computer. We're then also linking those public computer census hubs with volunteers. Particularly, we've had a couple of high school students, a number of high school students, that have volunteered, they knew community service hours. So how better, you know, how better than to link up senior citizens with younger people who, you know, really love technology and can teach the older adults how to use it?
I have a question about the education, so it seems like we should start educating people now, since it's coming fairly soon. So for us, Village Meetings, Facebook, we have a new Village Newsletter. So do you have PDFs and, you know, short sort of discussion points that you could send us that we could use so that we don't have to-
Sure. We're in the, we're in the process right now of not just doing our advertising for our own bus line and our, for our bus shelters, but we're actually putting together a tri-fold brochure that we can put on the buses and in our power transit vehicles, then we'll be able to distribute that more broadly. The Census Bureau has a whole host of materials.
Okay.
And so there's flyers in Spanish and English and other languages that are available online for all, all sorts of activities and all sorts of audiences. So that would, if, if it's something that we can't necessarily provide you, and don't hesitate to call me if there's something specific that you're looking for, but if not, you may likely be able to find it online on the census website. We're still creating our own county Census 2020 website. Our hope is to be, to better connect people to the resource that they're looking for on the Census 2020 website, because their website is huge. So if you're looking for information about confidentiality, we're going to have a direct link to the information about confidentiality. If you're looking for the flyers, we'll have a direct link to that. If you're looking to connect to the school curriculum and school materials, we'll connect you to that.
Okay.
Some of the municipalities do have like annual discussions with their school districts, and so they're including the census discussion in that annual discussion with the school district. So if you have that opportunity, that would certainly be helpful to help us encourage-
We have a school board member here, so.
So if we have the opportunity to encourage the school districts here, you know, the school district here to adopt a Census Week, that would certainly, we think, be really, really helpful. By the way, the most undercounted group in the 2010 census, if you took a guess, children under five. Children under five. We think it's because parents think, because they're not in school yet, they don't need to be counted. But think of the school district, you can't build a school overnight, you can't build an expansion to that school overnight. The school districts look at birth certificates to see what their likely projections are. And that's how the Census Bureau knows that children under five were in fact undercounted, because it didn't, the numbers of under five did not line up with the Health Department and the, built the birth certificate records. So we have to even not just encourage parents how to respond about college-stage students, but we have to also educate them about the fact that their children under five count as well.
Okay.
All right?
All right, good stuff, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
So, all right, are you taking bets on whether we crest a population of a million?
Our, the estimates right now is that Westchester should hit a million people around 2028.
Uh huh.
So, but the fact that we were, we believe places like Portchester and Austin were so undercounted last time around, it's going to be, it's going to be, exactly, I think we're going to be a lot closer than we thought, so.
Which leverages a whole lot of federal money.
Exactly, so, it's, you know, I should have, by the way, I should say, each person that is not counted, the Census Bureau's estimate, each person that is not counted is a loss of about $2,500 a year to the municipality.
Wow.
Four people alone is $10,000. Four hundred people is a million dollars. Okay? Each year for 10 years. So imagine Portchester that was probably undercounted by at least 5,000 or 6,000 people.
It's millions of dollars.
It's millions of dollars a year. That's the importance of this. Your 2000, your census, sorry, your sales tax reimbursement is still based on 2010 numbers.
Right.
Imagine how much money even just Portchester's lost out on, just because we don't think they had an accurate count back in 2010.
We should all rent our basements for a short period of time.
That's why it's important to you. That's why, you might have had a great count last time around, but it's going to be just as important to you this time around to make sure you get an accurate count.
Okay.
All right?
All right. We thank you very much, and thank you, not only for this, but for all that you do on behalf of all of the municipalities.
Thank you very much, guys.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, buddy.
All right, I had a bunch of announcements to make, and the first, and an important one, is that New York State, as most of you know, has implemented early voting for the first time, and early voting has now begun. In the town of Mount Pleasant, the early voting is taking place at the Mount Pleasant Rec Center, which is where the Branch Library and the Mount Pleasant Pool is. You can vote tomorrow, I'm sorry, tomorrow, yes, tomorrow, the 29th, noon to 8:00, Wednesday the 30th, 8:00 to 4:00, Thursday the 31st, noon to 8:00, and then Saturday, November 2, and Sunday, November 3, noon to 5:00, again at the Mount Pleasant Community Center. So if you're interested in voting early, you can do so at your, your own choice. If you want to find out more info or to confirm your early voting location, which again, in Mount Pleasant is the, is the community center, you can go to citizenparticipation.westchester.gov.com. You can also call 914-995-5700. So, purpose of early voting was to maximize the opportunity for everybody to have an opportunity to be heard, so we encourage not only everybody to vote, but if early voting is helpful to you, to take advantage of it. This past weekend, we had the annual Ragamuffin Parade, festive day in Pleasantville, always one of the most amusing days in all of the year. So thanks to the hundreds of families and adults who participated, thanks to the middle school marching band, which leads the parade every year, thanks to the folks at the school district for showing up and helping, thank you to Shane and to PCTV for filming it. If you missed it, or if your kid might possibly have been sighted by the PCTV cameras, you can see that video online within-
Couple of days.
A couple of days at PCTV76.org. So shout out to our Parks and Rec Department and the leadership of Matt Traynor. Matt, Mike Newman, Debbie Nava were, as they always are, great participants and great organizers, the police department and the sheriffs that assist us. It was Matt's inaugural Ragamuffin Parade, so now he's a true Pleasantvillian, even though he only works here. But it was an all-around great day, lots of amusing commentary about who might have had the best costume. I think I vote for the kid who was dressed as a Pleasantville garbage truck, with quite an elaborate cardboard structure. So, a great day, and thanks to all. As you, I hope, noticed, after a couple of troubled starts, Wheeler Avenue has been milled and repaved and now restriped, and so that project has been completed in advance of the winter season. Good news all the way around. We've kicked off our food scrap recycling program. You want to take the ball on there?
Yeah, so I've been participating in the food scrap program. It's, it's great. I've got my countertop pail that I use with the compostable liners, and then I transfer those to the bigger pail, and on Saturday, I drop them off. And as I've been telling people, the great thing about municipal compost is you can compost a lot of things that you can't just in your own backyard, including meat, bones, all kinds of leftover food, and notably compostable containers. So increasingly, there are establishments downtown, including the new Restaurant Fat Root, for instance, that use compostable materials, but those can't be composted at home. However, in the municipal compost, you can, you can turn them in, and they will become composted. So the bins and all of the equipment can be purchased for $25 at Village Hall, and where else can they be found, Eric?
Village Hall. If they, if they mail in a check, we'll, we'll actually deliver it to the house.
And-
Your home address, too.
Yes.
November 9, they're back at the farmer's market.
Okay, great.
So it's a, it's a $25 set that includes a countertop pail and a bigger one, but just to be clear, you don't have to buy the set we offer, as long as you use compostable bags, if I got that right?
That's correct. So you can, as long as, we don't want any plastic to, to contaminate the stream, as it were, but you can use a compostable liner, you can use a paper bag. We don't want a lot of paper, but if you're just using that to transfer the leftover food scraps, you can do that as well. And should I mention the coyote movement?
Yes, please do, I was-
So in, in two days, on the 30th of October at 7:00 PM at the Clinton Street Center, we're hosting a, an informational session on coyotes. Dana Goin is going to be coming from the Wolf Conservation Center to talk about coyotes in the area, when and why you might be seeing them, how to coexist safely with them. I think it should be quite interesting, and so I encourage people to come.
All right, so that's this coming Wednesday, the 30th. And while we're on the list of events, before our next meeting, Veterans Day will have come and gone. We have an annual ceremony at the gazebo for Veterans Day, that's Monday, November 11. The ceremony is at 11:00 AM, as they are all around the United States. So we have a short, but very heartfelt ceremony honoring veterans. We encourage folks to come on down, Monday, November 11, at 11:00 AM at the gazebo in Memorial Plaza. Couple of other notes to make. People have asked me what's going on with Key Food, and I corresponded with Richard Grobman, who's the president of Key Food, and he reports, as perhaps you've noticed if you've been in, that they are well along with a stem-to-stern renovation, and they anticipate being finished and having a grand opening of the new store sometime in the month of November, so big doings afoot there. We've had a raft of new businesses open recently on Wheeler, and welcome all of them, and we have been honored, or I should say, our restaurant, Southern Table, has been honored, putting the name Pleasantville, New York, for the first time on a Michelin list. Michelin established, I think extended their ratings into Westchester County, which had not hitherto been the case, and Blue Hill at Stone Barns earned itself, I guess, two stars, but they have a category called Bib Gourmand, which are restaurants that Michelin says serve quality food at good value, and only eight restaurants in all of Westchester achieve that, but one of them was our very own Southern Table here in Pleasantville. So congratulations to the folks at Southern Table, and a further manifestation of the fact that Pleasantville's become, at its own scale, a little bit of a foodie mecca. Any other announcements to make?
Well, I see that you have a copy of Pleasantville Posts-
Oh, yes, I completely forgot. Eric is sitting in front of me, there you go.
All right, so we have an online version of this, but for those who prefer to have something tactile, we have a few of them available at Village Hall and scattered, I think, at the library and the Clinton Street Center, but we are improving our efforts to communicate with all of our, all of our community members. So this is the first edition of our newsletter, Pleasantville Posts, and there will be another one coming out probably January-ish, after the holidays. So take a look, tell us what you think. Like us on Facebook as well, if you haven't done that yet, and reach out and let us know what you think about the new newsletter.
So if you are internet inclined, our homepage at Pleasantville-NY.gov has a very big button on the left-hand side with that very headline, Pleasantville Posts. Click into that, and it will appear before you. So, as I say, we're, as Nicole has already said, we've been working with the folks at Concord and Communications on a modest contract to assist us in getting this kind of stuff out, because we operate rather lean and mean within our full-time staff, and much appreciate their good efforts and professionalism, and we look forward to better and more timely communication going forward. So while you're at Pleasantville-NY.gov, in that same left-hand column, you can choose to sign up for Village Information, and we encourage you to do that. Second button down, News and Announcements, allows you to subscribe to the kinds of things you might want to get, and also to subscribe to our Code Red Emergency Notification System. We are hopeful, as we remain at the moment in the hurricane season, that we won't have any reason to communicate with you in an emergency, but would like to have the capacity to do so. And thanks again to Norman Drummond, the commissioner of planning for that good presentation on the census. Is that something that we can put up on the web as well, her PowerPoint?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Any comment from the public on any subject? Or call the number 769-1677.
Phone line is open.
Phone line is open.
Operators are standing by.
Operators are standing by. The first 10 callers get a free extra knife. All right, with that, let's go to the Resolutions 258.
Whereas introductory law 9 of 2019 has been introduced as the village of Pleasantville seeks to amend Chapter 173, Article 7, Section 60 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville shall hold a public hearing concerning introductory local law 9 of 2019 on November 14, 2019 at 8:00 PM at Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to consider the proposed local law, and the law is attached.
Is there a second?
Sorry?
So the proposed local law is to establish a no parking zone on the west side of Martling. That would be the right-hand side as you turn from Bedford onto Martling, from a point at the intersection to 69 feet. The reason being, in the course of several reviews, both a subdivision proposal, as well as comments from the neighbors, that is a sharp turn greater than 90 degrees, and if cars are parked too close to the edge, it can become a hazard. So if you support or have opinions on that subject, we encourage you to let us know or to attend the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 259.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approve the minutes of the meeting held on 16th, 2019.
Third, second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes? One of the things I commented on in the announcements, which I will remind everyone of, was that the Westchester Table Tennis Club hosted the first-ever World Parkinson's Table Tennis Tournament, which was just a fantastic event with the folks from 20 different countries, between the participants and the umpires, all focused on playing table tennis, folks that are affected to a greater or lesser degree by Parkinson's. So a great event, and a shout out to Westchester Table Tennis Club and to Will Shortz and his crew for organizing that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approve, David, 260.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for the commodity bid of lighting supplies for the Parkway Field Lights Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to describe the project, so folks realize what it is we're proposing to do?
Sure, so we're proposing to place six permanent lights at Parkway Field to replace the temporary lights that are wheeled out on an annual basis, so it'll be less impactful to the environment, the lighting will be more focused on the fields than they currently are, be more cost-effective as well. The game plan is to get, to go out to bid for the equipment itself, and then utilize village staff and the village electrician to actually construct and insert the lights.
So just to be clear, these are much more modest lights than exist on the towers on the front field.
Right.
These are essentially on telephone poles or something of the sort.
Correct, correct.
All right?
Got to step up from the-
With, without a-
It's a, it's a great project, and I think one that will have benefits for everybody, and has been thoughtfully arranged to avoid spill into the adjacent areas. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approve, 261.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Recreation Department to hold the annual Veterans Day Ceremony at 11:00 AM on November 11, 2019 in Memorial Plaza, and further authorizes the police chief to post no parking signs in the Memorial Plaza- in the Memorial Plaza parking lot in advance of the event, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as mentioned, Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11. Just to be clear, it's not the entire lot. We only need to mark out the spaces surrounding the gazebo. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 262.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves Wednesday, March 18, 2020, as the official date for the 2020 Village election.
Is there a second?
Second.
So in, we have three-year terms here for the mayor and the trustees, and what that means is that we have two folks up one year, three the next, and then the third year is an off-year with no election. So the election that's coming up Wednesday, March 18, is a election for two seats on the Village Board. Steve and Nicole are the incumbents, and they will have to decide if they will be running again. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 263, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a submission to Westchester County Board of Elections on the following locations as polling sites for the March 18, 2020 Village election. Village Recreation Department at 48 Marble Avenue, Emmanuel Lutheran Church at 197 Mandeville Road, and Hayes Hoes Firehouse at 134 Bedford Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as was the case in our last election, we now allow the County Board of Elections to manage our elections, and am I correct in believing that they will not accept fewer than three locations?
Right. These are the locations that we've, we used last time around, and we're proposing again this time around.
I will say, in an election that does not generate a huge turnout, it seems like a waste of time to have three locations. Is there any option there? I mean, the county pays for it, right?
Right. And this is where we're going off of their guidance.
Okay.
The challenge was the parking at the Hayes Hoes Firehouse. That was a real mess.
Yes.
Is there any way we can talk to them and say maybe signage, something, because people were crossing the road?
Yeah, absolutely. The other thing that we're keeping an eye on is hopefully the same districts will report as they did last time around, although there's no guarantee that the County Board of Elections can change that on us. There'll be maybe notifications and all of that, but something we're obviously paying attention to.
So just to be clear to folks, you don't have the choice of coming to any one of these three. You're assigned to the one that's in your district. So you have to go to the one you're assigned to, and you have to pay attention to the mailing you get from the County Board of Elections.
Exactly. And we'll do, we'll do a good job with outreach and assisting them in those efforts.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 264, Nicole.
Sorry, it's being slow. Oh, here we go. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby suspends parking meter fees for the time allowed on one-, two-, and three-hour meters from Friday, November 29, 2019 through Wednesday, December 25, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is an annual effort to make the Village more holiday shopping-friendly. Just to be clear, as is stated, time limits still apply. So if you park at a one-hour meter, you are allowed to be there only for one hour, and you are liable to get a ticket if you extend beyond that. And it applies also, as stated in the resolution, to one-, two-, and three-hour meters. It does not apply to 12-hour meters. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 265.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Recreation Department to hold the annual tree lighting and holiday sing event at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2, 2019, at the intersection of Mandeville Road and Great Oak Lane, and further authorizes the Police Chief to conduct traffic restrictions in support of the event.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mark your calendars, December 2, at the Triangle at Edgewood and Mandeville. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 266, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Lisa Fiore to Recreation Assistant at the Clinton Street Center, job code 0629, CSEB Wage Schedule B, Step 1, annual salary $35,988 effective November 4, 2019. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks, the maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
The Panther Club?
No, that's the Senior Center.
Oh, okay.
Replacing a retirement.
Replacing pile?
Yes.
All right. So that's a budgeted position. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 267, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Mayor to sign the intermunicipal library agreement with the Town of Mount Pleasant effective June 1, 2019 for a period of 10 years, and the option to automatically extend for a second 10-year period, and the intermunicipal library agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as folks are probably aware, the, our library is called the Mount Pleasant Library, and that is because it serves the entire town. The roots of the library began in the Village of Pleasantville, and back in the '60s, the plan was hatched to build a new library and also to provide a branch library in Valhalla. And in 1965, a joint agreement between the town and the village was established to share in the costs of building the library and the share in the operation of it. In the last year or so, it's become clear that some aspects of that needed to be sharpened up and clarified. The core aspects of it remain as they have been for a long time, and the relative share paid by the two communities will remain unchanged for a 10-year period, potentially to be renegotiated at year 10. But the town pays 66%, and the village pays 34% of the overall cost of operating the library. So comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. 268.
So there really isn't a reservation over here, at least not that I see. Do you guys see an actual copy of the resolution?
Yeah.
The text?
Well...
Oh, right.
Be it resolved that...
Be it resolved that the following budget transfers and accounting entries are hereby authorized, I guess is the right way to put it? From the $317 from the contingent fund, this is coming from the general fund account, from $317 from the contingent fund over to the transfer to capital fund, this is allocating for the Memorial Plaza Civic Space. The capital fund, where the same $317 is going from interfund transfer from general fund over to Memorial Plaza Civic Space, Phase 1 Design, and $3,919.50 is coming from Sidewalk Program, 50/50, for the September through October 2019 period, over to Capital Sidewalk Project. And then from the capital fund, a budget transfer to closed projects and return balances to appropriate funds, $4,350 from the tennis court rehab project account over to a transfer to the general fund. In other words, that money's going back into the general fund after having been appropriated to the tennis courts.
All right.
We didn't use money that we thought was...
Is there a second?
Second.
Tennis court project is now done?
Correct. There's some painting that will be done on the practice wall, but other than that, we can cover that through operations, so we'll return the funds back to the general funds.
All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 269, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract repayment of claims for 2019 for fiscal year ending 2020, covering check numbers 95080 to 95171, as listed below. The general fund, $196,784.27. The water fund, $155,418.81. The capital fund, $204,836.41. The refuse fund, $26,869.66. The trust fund, $23,638.75, for a total of $607,547.90, the descriptions attached.
Is there a second?
Sorry?
We don't always spend this much money, but we're spending $168,304.87 as our payment to the New York State Employees Health Fund, so.
And paving.
And paving, yes. Any other comments or questions? I had a, I'm sure this is right, but we still end up paying Cablevision, but I had thought, at least in the residential side of the world, that Cablevision ceases to be the operator and all the money goes to Optimum slash Altix. Is that not the case in the LightPath system?
Or do we just not change the name of the vendor in the system?
Yeah, we'll look into that.
No, we pay as, they still have it to Cablevision, otherwise we would have changed it.
I'm sure you would, yeah.
Some of them are a little...
They might have a legacy roll off there.
Right. Doing business ads or something, yeah. All right. No further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Okay, that was the last of our regular resolutions. Any new business? Any comment from the public?